Call to order, Monday, September 9th, 2019, in the commission chambers. The local planning agency, Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Could we have the roll call?
Sure. Second Vice Chair Wykoff.
Present.
First Vice Chair Beloski.
Here.
Commissioner Hearn.
Here.
Commissioner Rappa.
Here.
Commissioner Pryor, um, he's-
I think he just stepped out.
Okay. Commissioner Klyat.
Here.
And Chairman Noble.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item agenda number three, new business A, capital improvement plan.
Ms. Chairman, Jerry Murphy, for the record, I just wanted to point out something, um, as we get started. I mentioned this during the workshop about the capital improvement program and, and the role that the Planning Commission has in that. But there was a mistake in your digital packet. You got two duplicated pages. There are actually three pages to the CIP, and they should be in your paper packet. There's one first long page of projects, and that's followed by a second shorter page of projects, and then a single page of vehicles.
And that, you, I think you're referring to the spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
The Excel?
And they follow page thirteen.
That's not in mine.
Right after page thirteen, there should be three printed spreadsheet.
Mine goes from thirteen to seventeen, my printed packet. That's all right, we could share. All right, there we go.
Does anybody else need any?
Mine just didn't have it. Might be in the back or something, but nope.
So this is the, the list of capital improvements, and I, I would direct your attention, as I'm sure Walt will, to the five columns to the right, which is the five-year CIP going out. The Planning Commission's purview is limited to items over $100,000. But again, basically, your role is to determine that there is a consistency with the comprehensive plan, make that finding, and recommend that to the city commission. Thank you.
Planning Commission, my, my name is, for the record, Walt Pierce. I'm the Director of Finance for the City of Dare Beach, and, um, we completed the operational, um, and capital budget for FY 2020. And we've already had a first reading, which was last Tuesday, and the second and final reading is on the seventeenth. I'll be brief on this and summarize, um, this capital project schedule, and point out, um, some major, um, impacts to this, and then, you know, I'll take any questions you might have. The first page, uh, which lists the projects across the Excel spreadsheet that lists the, the projects, um, on the left-hand side, um, and in across is the fiscal years. And then, a little to the right of, of the middle of the page, you'll see FY 2020 budget. And those are the figures that we've built our capital budget, uh, for the year, for next year's budget, which, on the second page, you can see that the subtotal is eight million, 557,000. And, um, a good part of that is related to, and you can see in the middle of the page of the first page, 7.5 million, 15,000, and then 319,000 are all earmarked for Crystal Island, Area One. And this is the part of the 15 million loan that we, that the city, um, borrowed to handle, um, or to handle, to go against the, um, stormwater projects for Area One, Three, and, and Five, which is Crystal Island, Parsley, Marguerite, and John Pass areas. So, going out, um, just to show you how we've laddered this, if you go, and again, I'm on the first page here of the projects. If you go, uh, to FY 2021, you can see that the Parsley-Marguerite Area Three is 4.5 million, with, uh, project research being another 6,500. And then, um, the next year, 2022, um, you can see, uh, down the lower part of the page, that Area Five, which is John's Pass Village Boulevard area, um, is 4.2 million, with 10,500 for the project research. So, we've laddered this, these three projects, um, that we've borrowed the 15 million to go, to go against. We've laddered these out over the next three years. They may drift into, um, 2023, but that all depends on, um, the timing of the, the project and, and some other things. We've also earmarked some things in the 2020 budget for, um, improving beach access and parking lot improvements, which is a, uh, significant project going forward, um, in the next couple of years to come. The, um, the other significant thing is, um, we, we also are trying to budget some extra money for miscellaneous, um, stormwater projects that, that might just be, um, over and above the 15 million dollar project. There isn't too much, um, of vehicles. This is the third page, um, for 2020. We are, the only real significant thing is where we are, uh, purchasing a, a garbage truck. We did purchase a garbage truck that was much needed this fiscal year, and we were hoping to wait on the purchase of this another year or two. But, um, this, this truck that's currently in service is desperately in need of repair and bomb beyond, in some parts, beyond repair. And so, um, in, in fact, we have already, um, ordered this, um, which should come in, into, um, sometime after October. So the total for 2020 for projects and, um, vehicle replacement is eight million, 803, eight million, 803,000. I will say this, that for your benefit, um, and on the second page of the project list, or the middle page there, I have underfunded future major stormwater projects, and this starts in 2022. And the, these are areas where would be next areas targeted after the, the three major areas that I've mentioned. This would be beyond Crystal Island, Parsley, Marguerite, and, uh, John's Pass. So, th- this would be another, this would be the, the, um, another portion of, of projects that we would need to address. And as I've indicated to the commission and the Budget Review Committee, uh, the city manager and myself, we want to be proactive in trying to, um, address how we can fund those projects, and not necessarily go out for a bondage, a bond or a loan, um, to, to pay for those. So we want to be proactive now to see what we can do to, to raise money to go, um, to fund those projects. Is there any questions anybody has?
Robin, go ahead.
Okay, we've never seen a CIP since I served at the planning commission. Why, I mean, we're supposed to, and when I served on other planning commissions, they were always giving it to us in advance. No one, not presented at a meeting, but we could study them at home and bring them. Why have we never seen a CIP?
You know, we did an abbreviated, um, we did this in abbreviated way last year. I didn't do a formal presentation. Uh, I don't even know if I, I did a presentation before you.
No, I've, you, this is the first time you've ever come since I've served.
But I think last year Linda did, did provide, um, the CIP for 2019 to the commission. Now whether you had any questions or remember it, I, I don't know, but I, I, we want it to be, um, an ongoing thing going forward.
I think that's a good idea. And it's hard to look at it, to have it presented. It would have been nice to have this presented prior to you talking to us, so we kind of, kind of looked at this. If I may make that request when we see this.
And, you know, and, um, we, we have, we have talked about this, um, with, we've had a joint meeting with the, um, not that I expect all of you to know this, but we have had, um, a lot of extensive meetings with the Budget Review Committee that have helped, um, putting the numbers in here and helping with this. And we've had some joint, joint meetings with the commission where, um, you know, they've provided some input too. So there's been some, there's been a lot of thought put to this, and not something that we just, you know, randomly put together. I just wanted to mention one other thing that I forgot. There isn't too many vehicles, um, slated for 2020. We, we, the city last year embarked upon a, and leasing enterprise program with, uh, Enterprise Rental Car. And this year, this fiscal year, we leased eight vehicles. There's roughly five in sanitation, um, two in rec, and one in parking. Uh, brand-new vehicles, they have, um, all the, uh, uh, security devices and, and, uh, which would help our insurance rate, um, or insurance rates, because our, our insurance coverage, while they are leased vehicles, our insurance that we have, our property and casualty insurance, still covers those. Um, they have GPS systems on there. And we kind of want to, uh, test out these eight over the next, um, several months before we commit to Phase Two of this, to see if this is really a viable option, and if it's profitable for the city. And I'm not there yet, um, as far as, um, you know, is this a good idea to keep going forward and, and just get out of the business of where the city doesn't own vehicles, but they lease? Because I think once you do that, it's, it's a, uh, there's no going back. So, uh, one of the advantages of this program is they're responsible for all the maintenance of the vehicles, and after two or three years, they will take these vehicles and trade them in and, and provide replacements. The idea being is, as they trade these vehicles in and we get new vehicles, the, there, most of these are trucks. So trucks are a hot market right now. And the idea being is, is that the increase that we would experience in replacing these would be minimized by the, um, the cost gain or the sale gain that they would, that they would get these vehicles. So if they sell these vehicles and they get a good profit, that only helps us, because that goes into the, uh, the sale or the, the new leased vehicle that we get. So it's a good concept, um, but like I said, I, I, the jury's still out on whether this is a profitable thing and something we want to pursue.
I have one more question. On the beach access and parking lot improvement item, page one, for 300,000, w- would you give explanation on that?
Yeah, that's money from the sales, uh, the extra cent sales tax that we keep in a separate fund, which is called, uh, the lost fund or the local option sales tax. We receive the revenue for the extra penny in there, um, and that's money that we can spend on, uh, improving the infrastructure, um, and, and emergency-type, uh, vehicles. We bought the, the new flatter truck out of that fund, which was considered a, an emergency-type vehicle.
But how is their parking lot and beach access? How is, why is that for 300,000?
Um-
What is going into improving that?
Um, maybe the city manager can chime in on this, but I, the, the part, part of our beach access ways really need to be improved, um, not, not just from the accessway itself, um, to the beach, but also the parking lots, uh, need to be improved and improved signage. If we're going to continue to, uh, make money, uh, from our visitors, we do need to keep, um, updating these areas. They haven't been updated in quite a while. And in fact, um, when we sat down with the public works folks, we found out that, we thought that a couple of hits of this, uh, each year, um, would help, but they, it's a, it's a large expense to, to improve all these areas. We don't want to do all of them at once, but we want to stagger it out and hit them strategically.
Don't the meters bring in, where does the parking meter?
Parking meter revenue goes into part, most of it, I'd say, um, eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of it goes into the general fund. And then the Archibald goes into the, the Archibald, uh, parking lot goes into the Archibald Fund.
Okay, so, and is that where parking lot improvement is?
No, this parking lot improvement is coming from the lost fund.
Right, but what parking lot improvement is that?
Um, it'd basically be all of the parking beach, parking that, that, uh, that, uh, go in line with the beach access areas.
So all, going up the road, because we've got one across, but the meters are in. Okay.
This would be, this would go toward repaving, um, those parking lots, um, that, that there is a beach access to. And, you know, proper striping and, and signage. We've done some patchwork in the last couple of months, but it's only a patch that to get us, you know-
Through.
Yeah. There, there need, there really is some major work here that needs to be done, so that, you know, we, we can find these areas enticing to our visitors.
Okay. And I think it's great that we're charging for parking. I mean, it's revenue.
Parking revenue is a good revenue source. Um, it, it's not a guarantee. Um, it, you know, when we have some things that affect the city, like hurricanes and, and red tide, it's, it's something that, uh, you know, it could have an impact.
Okay, thank you.
I have one also. I noticed that, uh, in 2020, there's nothing in the budget for the sanitation vehicle, equipment, and storage. Are we bringing our garbage trucks back to the beach?
There's, there's a carryover amount in this year. Uh, this year, we had budgeted 200,000 for a sanitation facility at the marina.
This is the one that's, uh, over there behind Wawa's, right?
Right, that, it's, there used, there, there was a structure there at one time, and they, they tore it down. There's 200,000 in this year's budget to go toward, uh, replacing that. Now that, now the, nothing was done on that, and the board will, will have the, the ability to, uh, roll that over into next year if they decide to.
Do we own that, uh, area, or we're renting it?
That, that is city-owned.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. All right, great. So that's what the 240,000 was to purchase that place, or?
I'm sorry?
Uh, in nineteen, in 2019, you had 240,000. Is that money, is that what we went to purchasing, that, that lot, or I never knew?
Uh, I'm sorry, that's, that's the building of the, um, of the facility.
But off the, uh, out of the city? It's over there behind Wawa's, not, not right by the marina?
This, this facility would be to, not for the garbage trucks, but would be for a facility for maybe a couple of the public works trucks, and a place for the public works director, um, and the garbage trucks would still be maintained off the island. But this facility would be for, um, you know, maybe a public works truck or two, um, which are, are usually maintained at the marina anyway.
Okay.
So-
If I may, just to answer your question, Bob Daniels, your city manager, it's seed money, basically. So far, the cost estimates for the building to make it Cat Five hurricane-proof, uh, is, is too high for us to move forward with the project. So we're putting together some money with the hopes of, between the next two or three, I forget what year do you have this project in, because I don't have it-
Uh, we initially had a budget for this year.
Okay.
2019.
So, uh, so we're hoping that we might be able to start part of this project, because they do need a building that they can store some of their equipment in here versus over where the, uh, garbage trucks are kept.
So this building you're talking about is the one by the marina?
Correct.
Yes.
The old decrepit one.
Correct, replaced the old one.
Even though they demoed it yet, or it's still there, but falling, okay, great, all right.
That, that facility that we keep, the drug, we don't own that, we-
That's what I was, I was confused about.
Yeah.
Like, we don't own that one out behind Wawa's.
We rent that.
Wow, I didn't know we bought that, but that wouldn't be a bad idea.
We, we do rent that, I'm sorry.
Okay, my, no problem.
That's why I just wanted to make sure we're talking apples to apples.
It was a little confusing there. Good. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
So what is, uh, what is our expectations you'd need of us now?
Please turn on your, uh, microphone.
Sorry. Recommendation for the Board of Commissioners of approval and a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan.
It's a quick review, but anybody, uh, want to make a motion on that?
I make a motion, we accept it as presented.
Do we need someone to second?
Second, I'll second the motion.
And may we have a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor, he's not present. Um, Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, number three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I made a suggestion, Mr. Pierce. Would we be able, next year, when this CIP comes out, to have this come out with the minutes ahead of time, so that, uh, Gwen is kind enough to send, so we could review it before just looking at it?
Yes, and I, and, um, I apologize, I should have seen, uh, this packet before it, it went out. I only saw this packet that went to you this morning, and I, I knew it wasn't a complete set.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, B, Board of Commissioners referral for additional review of ordinance 2019-17. Does the city have a, uh, presentation, staff?
I have a brief one for you. Um, once, uh, I arrived here, um, one of the biggest complaints that started, I guess sometime after July 1st, there was an enactment of ordinances dealing with live-aboard vessels. And, uh, so we got with the Sheriff's Office, because they do our patrol both on the water and on the land. And we had a discussion as to what we wanted to put into an ordinance, number one, that was enforceable. And since they were the enforcement entity, we wanted to make sure that that would be taken care of. And then, uh, number two, to make sure that it was compatible to some of the other ordinances that are here in the area. You don't want to try to rewrite the book. You want to make it easy on the, the person that's, uh, traveling through or transiting through your area to go somewhere else, but, uh, the problems that we were having were people that were just living and not dealing with the sanitary code and everything else right on our waterways, polluting our waters, and, uh, or abandoning their vessels. So, uh, this is the ordinance that you have in front of you, and if you, you move along to page 32, I think, because most of it is-
Mr. Chair, if I might, th- this item is the fences.
Oh.
I thought it was the-
No, that's-
The city attorney set me up.
Why don't we keep going ahead with the, with the water when I don't-
Okay. You want to do, can you?
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll go to C, TCH 2019, Agenda Item C.
Okay, I apologize. I don't have my agenda in front of me, but-
It's okay, you're new here.
Yes.
We'll do C first, 29-14.
Okay, so, uh, if you look to page 32, uh, that's basically where we, uh, we started making the changes to the existing waterway ordinance. And, uh, the, there will be a permit requirement, uh, for, uh, vessels. And basically, the, uh, process will be if somebody wanted to, uh, dock in our area, uh, not dock, I'm sorry, but, uh, moor in our area, or lay anchor, or whatever the proper term is. I'm not a boater, so I apologize. They would come first to the marina, and I guess this gets published in the navigation charts and everything else once we get the ordinance in place. But they would come to the marina, they would have to pump out, which is free, uh, but they would have to pay $5 for a permit. The permit allows them to, um, go ahead and lay anchor, uh, over, it's got to be over 200 feet away from any land area. Um, and they are allowed to be there for 72 hours. After 72 hours, they have to leave the area. They can come back, say maybe they're going from the east side of Florida and they're coming back this way. It just has to be a month in between, so 30 days, actually. So, um, and then it's the same provisions. They would have to come in, get another permit, uh, at what a minimal cost, and then pump out again. So the pump out is a requirement, even if they say, well, we're empty, doesn't matter. We want you to pump out, because we want to make sure that, uh, everything is taken care of to the, uh, with our environment, with our waterways, and so forth. The, the other issue that's in here is there's also, uh, a restriction that the vessel cannot be left alone for more than eight hours. Uh, again, this is some of the language that was suggested to us. Uh, but this way, the Sheriff's Office has a little bit more teeth to deal with abandoned vessels, or there's even vessels that are, um, moored out there that are like B and Bs. You know, the, there's a particular gentleman, I don't know who he is or anything, but I'm being told this by the marine guys, that he buys these cheap sailboats that are left around that just basically float. And, you know, they, I guess advertise them as a B and B on the water, and they ding them out. I guess they give them a dinghy, so if they want to come back in and visit one of our gin mills or something, they can. But, you know, it's, if somebody's going to make a profit on it, well, the situation is if that vessel sits there longer than eight hours, they're going to tag it as being abandoned and, uh, and go through their process, which is a long process to get rid of the unsightly vessels that, that we have. But they are willing to do that and follow up on it. So I really thought that was one of the, the key elements that we have here. And, uh, that's pretty much it. It's a little bit of a change, but I think the quality of life will be better.
Yeah, first of all, I want to apologize, because I typically do read, read it all at first, and we're just, in the matter of time, everybody was like, hey, let's just speed it along, but-
We're all in the hurricane mode still.
Right. But yeah, I know we, uh, we were trying to work with Pinellas County before, and it's a really maritime law and a sticky situation, because it's federal waters over there, and we don't have jurisdiction. We looked at putting in mooring buoys, and then we can rent out those mooring buoys and ma- and make better money on it and, and be able to monitor them, but-
The problem is the seagrass. Uh, the FWC and DEP don't really like to see mooring fields in areas where you're trying to redevelop the seagrass, and that's what they've been doing in our area.
But these people just go drop their anchor. It's like in the Florida Keys where it's destroying the reef, you know? They put in the mooring buoys when you want to go diving, and they're not dropping their anchor on the coral.
Right.
So yeah, this is something that we definitely need to take a look at and figure out, because this is, uh, this is bad, uh, with them dumping their, their raw sewage in the water.
And we did workshop this, uh, ordinance already with the commission, and it's coming up for the first reading tomorrow night. Um, and, uh, we are trying to move right along, so, you know, we can have this in place by October. Now, there is like a Phase Two, I call it, uh, because I have this idea that so far, I haven't found any reason why we couldn't. But it might have to go to Tallahassee to, uh, to get this, but I want to annex the waterway, so we don't have that problem of somebody being over the line, or where is the line? You know, it's kind of hard for, uh, you know, a sheriff's deputy who's on a boat trying to deal with safety and everything else, where are you, are you in the city or you're not in the city? So I want to try to make that easy, being former law enforcement myself. I want to try to make that easy on them, so they don't have to make that determination. So it's not conducting an annexation for a land grab or anything, but a water grab, so we can actually enforce all of these violations and the abandoned vessels that sit over, uh, off the, the land on, uh, what's that pine, bay pines? Thank you. Thank you, I knew I'd come up with it. But, so that's kind of like a Plan B. I didn't want to hold everything up because that's going to take a while, and I'll be more happy to come back to the commission here and let you know where we stand when we start.
That generates a question, and when you're saying annex, are you saying the federal government and the county will annex the waterways to us? Are we giving up our rights to the waterway?
No, the state will give up their right of ways to the water to us.
Perfect, even better, yep, good job there. Alright, any questions for the man? Anybody want to make a motion on that? I mean, we read through it pretty quick, but I think that that's all the points we've been going over for years.
I must make a motion that we accept it as read.
I'll second the motion.
I think we're also looking for a recommendation to...
I was going to say, do we need finding of facts in there in the motion?
You want a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan and a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners?
Okay, can we take that suggestion and redo the motion, please?
I'm going to say what he said.
You're the attorney.
I'm all for what you said.
It's on the record.
Alright, you get a second?
A second or I'll agree to that.
And let's go to the vote.
Sure. Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski? Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Kliet?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, now we'll go back, number three, New Business on the Agenda. B. Board of Commissioners referral for additional review of ordinance 2019-17. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, to amend the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110-Zoning, Article 6, Supplementary District Regulations, Division 3, Walls, Fences, Hedges, and Sand Fences.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Jerry Murphy, you have a memorandum in your package from, basically for your approval, and then a sort of staff report and recommendation. This was recently kind of a cleanup item that the board adopted to eliminate the word "commercial" because the result of that was that it limited the focus of the ordinance to commercial properties, and the idea is to regulate all the properties within the community. So we've redrafted the language, we've added some definitions to make it clear what's being discussed. The gist of the regulation is that in the rear setback, which is everything from the rear setback line, or what we're calling the building line, in other words, what's permissible under the zoning for the building envelope. Not the building itself, because some buildings don't go all the way to the setback line, but that building envelope, from that area to the rear lot line, along the rear lot line, and back then to the side yard, the fences there have to be three or four feet, and they have to be relatively opened or a hedge is allowed. And the hedge has to be maintained at that four-foot level as well. So this is basically to clarify that that's what the ordinance was always intended to do, and now we're, I think we have the language to do it. We've included some definitions specifically in this section rather than in the definition section of the Land Development Code for two reasons. One is we wanted to limit the changes to just this section alone, and the other is there are conflicting definitions that we're going to address over time, but the definitions that apply to this section are clearly attributed to this section so that it can be interpreted and enforced. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one, like, who or how is that policed? Does the neighbor have to report to the staff?
I believe code enforcement here is complaint-driven.
Okay.
But it would be enforced through code enforcement, and someone would make a complaint, or, you know, an obvious observation by a code enforcement officer in the process of his duties.
Obviously, fences make good neighbors, but hedges may not, because they get bigger.
The idea, I think, is to keep the views of the water open for everyone as much as possible, but allowing certain security and privacy.
Any other questions? Someone would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance 2019-17 as presented.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, what we'd like is a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan and a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners.
Based on the fact we find that it's inconsistent, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
And the rest of what he said.
Finding of facts. Yeah, it's new, but I like that, it's good. So we get someone to second?
I'll second.
And then let's go to the vote.
Sure. Commissioner Kliet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes New Business, and we're on to, yep, on to Old Business, Agenda Item 4A, Continued Hearing of TCH 2019-08. Want me to read the whole thing, or does staff just want to, okay? I think this is one we've been going over for the last several meetings.
Mr. Chair, for the record, Jerry Murphy, yes, you've been discussing this, I think, for several meetings. I'm at a disadvantage to help you with those discussions, I'm not privy to them, but I believe that this is finally in the format that you were looking for with the requirements that you've been looking for, and hopefully...
I think part of our issue is previous versions of this were in direct conflict with the new state law that was passed regarding permitting, required permitting for removal of nuisance or invasive species.
Yeah, and there's some confusion on that, just so, I don't know. But I'll clarify that you're certainly allowed to regulate trees. What the new statute basically says that a property owner has the alternative, if they don't want to go through your process, to contacting a certified land, or a licensed landscape architect, or a certified arborist under certain criteria of arborists. And they can make a determination that it's a danger to health, safety, and welfare, and that allows the property owner to cut down the tree without having to go through your procedures. Generally, I think what that stems from is that in the Miami Dade, the area of South Florida that I just called Miami, the processes and the permitting costs were becoming excessive, and it was deemed or discovered to be less expensive to go to a certified arborist or a landscape architect and have them make that determination, pay them for that determination, rather than going through the process. I don't believe that's the situation here, but we'll see what portends from the future.
Any questions? I mean, I think that last time, oh, go ahead.
From legal, what we want to do is we want to just go ahead and cut and paste the language from the House Bill 1159 that was passed, and amended 163.045, and we want to just put that language right into our ordinance, so...
Hey, can you just summarize what that is again?
Yeah, I can read it rather quickly, it's not very long. A local government may not require a notice, application, approval, permit, fee, or mitigation for the pruning, trimming, or removal of a tree on residential property if the property owner obtains documentation from an arborist certified by the International Society of Arbiculture or a Florida Licensed Landscape Architect that the tree presents a danger to persons or property. A local government may not require a property owner to replant a tree that was pruned, trimmed, or removed in accordance with this section. This section does not apply to mangroves. So we'll just put that right into this ordinance, and that'll make sure that we're, that we are consistent with state law as well.
Like it.
It may not require, cannot require.
They may not require.
This is mandatory all across the state for all.
But it says may not require.
May not require, if you require a permit, you're in violation of this. It should say shall, but they use the word may. Legislative drafting is not the most artful, especially when they introduce this stuff at the very last minute. I think this one came in pretty close to the very end, yeah.
So like, the big changes that I see for the residents is they are going to still need a permit now to cut down an invasive species and replant another tree?
That would be under this ordinance, the state statute doesn't address that, so if this ordinance...
I think in the past, we've never needed to have a permit to pull out a punk tree, or, you know, I think now we're going to have to have that. And I think that might slow down, no, it's not, okay, great.
If you have a list, I don't know what page number it is, 35 or 36?
It's the same way as the ordinance was prior, that you didn't need to have a permit for the invasive species.
Okay, good.
Prohibited trees, exotic species, and permit exemptions are on page 40. And a permit is, oh, you would say is required.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The following trees are prohibited. It might just be so that they can go verify that that tree is in fact that species. But currently, no permit was needed, I don't know why Linda or...
Well, I thought that we talked about last time we were going to change that, is...
I can't hear what you're saying, can you talk into the microphone a little bit louder?
Well, I understood we could not do anything, we couldn't change it because the state had House Bill 1159.
That does not affect this one at all.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't require a permit for the trees listed on 106-64 on page 40. By taking the word "not" and striking it, you would still have to get a permit.
Okay.
So if you don't want permits for those, you want to keep it, or you don't need a permit, you want to put the word "not" back in.
I would like to see the word "not" put back in because I think that'll slow down people, they won't, they'll just let them grow, and then it spreads all the way up downwind. So I think that we should allow them to continue to remove the invasive and not have to plant another tree. Our lots are so small as it is.
I don't think that, I mean, I took down a tree when I bought my house, and I don't think that they charge anything. It's kind of just like knowing that somebody's taken down a derelict tree, you know, so I, I mean, that's one way to look at it.
Some of the concern is that people don't always know what the trees are.
Right.
And so, you know, it's an invasive tree because it bothers me.
Right.
And so I took it out, and it turns out, you know, to be a live oak or something that, you know, would be good.
So I, my point is, it's not a revenue generator, generating thing, but it's just like the city kind of knows, and then maybe Deb goes drives by and say, oh, you know what, that's not really, that really is some tree that shouldn't go out. So I don't, I mean, just a suggestion, but I don't think anything that's bad, they, there's not that many. They're going to say anything about taking them out.
I'm, I'm not a tree expert by any means, but I know the ones that are real invasive. I can recognize the malaluka, the Australian pine, the eucalyptus. I'm not really as sure as a layperson what a chinaberry is or silk oak, those are the only two that I have trouble with. Resilient peppers, I think everybody knows what those are. So chinaberry, ear tree, and silk oak are the only... I guess what we could do too is put in a photograph of those species, or identifiers from a tree, tree book type source. We see the leaf and you see what the tree looks like.
Yeah, their website's pretty good.
Well, there are palm trees that are very invasive, too.
We don't have any listed in here.
There are, there's a couple that...
You would have to get a permit to take out the palms. Palms are a little more confusing, too, about what...
There's a few that are missing, too, some non, I mean, some invasive ones that are missing from this list, but...
Do you have any that you would like to suggest?
Carrot wood. Carrot wood. C-A-R-R-O-T-W-O-O-D.
Just for the information of the commission, we've had some offline discussions, Ms. Portell and I, regarding providing a guidebook of do's and don't trees. We can combine the University of Florida's invasive species information with some projects that we've done in other locations on the West Coast for trees that are good to plant. And that can be a standalone manual, it doesn't have to be in the code, but the code can reference it or something like that.
Do we have a way of designating which trees require permit and which ones don't, now that we're, now that we're going to say? So we're saying we're not requiring a permit to remove invasive species, right?
That would be on page 4A, the one, Section 106-64.
Okay.
A permit is not required for the removal of the following trees.
Okay, so then we have permits for all the other ones, and then associated fees or whatever they might be? Got it, thank you. And we're going to add carrot wood.
And then just the only, like, other thing that I've always can't understand why they do this, and it mostly pertains to the mangroves, which are so important, and even the sea oats. And I keep bringing this up, that you have nothing to encourage anybody to plant or grow those because once they're there, God forbid, a scrub jay moves in, or an osprey, or an eagle, you're never going to be able to get rid of it, and you're, then you're stuck with that. And I know that's not really a, on the city, I don't know if there's something we can put that people, if they have mangroves on their canal, they could lollipop them, or is that just, we're getting way too confused?
We're preempted from mangrove regulation at the city level unless we assume the DEP program. So Sarasota County has assumed the DEP program, but they have the resources to do that, we really don't. So we're preempted, the state takes over all the mangrove trimming.
Okay.
Yep. And you can actually remove mangroves, but you have to do mitigation.
Mitigation and all that, it's a, yeah, you could go plant one somewhere else.
It's all controlled by the state, they preempt us.
So there's nothing we could put in there to try to encourage people to have these behind their houses?
Well, I put them in my house behind the canal, these little bamboo things, you put them in there, and then they've grown, and then you're allowed to trim them as long as you do the trimming rules.
With the state, the lollipopping, they call it.
Different ways of doing it.
Yeah, okay, so there is something in there that if...
Yeah, but I guess if I sold the house and someone wanted to take them out, they'd have to get them from the big mall.
And do mitigation and all that. Same thing with the sea oats, you got some vacant lots on Gulf Boulevard, and now we have sea oats growing there. And I'm going, what are they going to do if they want to build a building there? They got sea oats. They got to get an engineering plan, and blah, 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 and it just slows everything down. I would like to see sea oats up and down the whole beach personally, but I know we got a rule in there from 19 whatever that if you have a seawall, you don't need sea oats. But I'd like to see something encouraging people to put sea oats behind that, especially these redevelopment, which almost require it. But okay, I like trees.
We have something called Living Shorelines, and we could look at a Living Shoreline ordinance. And this thing in Cape Coral where they do the back four feet adjacent to the seawall, they encourage you to put native plantings in there. And they have some incentives to go there, you could do that.
Well, I could see if you have a one-story house and your family's owned it, you know, for, since the 30s, 40s, 50s, one thing. But, you know, you come in and you're walking down the beach, and you're looking at this new condo development, and you're looking at their parking lot, they should have sea oats there. I know they got the seawall, so they're in code, or, but... I know when they did, redid the Barefoot Beach Resort, we were trying to get them to put sea oats back there, and I don't know why the commission dropped the ball and didn't make them do it. They've got a seawall, so they're compliant, but for the good of the city, it should be sea oats.
It doesn't look very nice.
And if they wanted not to put them by the pool or something, you know, but, I know I'm just, that's a whole nother can of worms when you start getting into the sea oats and the protected species plants, and then the animals that come with them.
You're on your soapbox again.
In the coming year, in the coming year, we're going to be necessarily looking at the comprehensive plan because of level of service standards for the impact fees, and then we're going to be looking at the... to be looking at the Land Development Code, so there'll be a lot of opportunities to inject some things into these sections.
Good.
And we'll try and do that in a methodical manner, so we're not all over the place, and we'll put together some priorities for you once we get to a point where we can tackle those things. Just as a point of clarity for Section 106-64, the way it's currently worded, if you take all the strike through an outline, is a permit is required to take out the invasive trees, and there's a requirement that they be replaced with a tree from the approved list, the Landscape Guidelines Book. So if you want to eliminate the requirement for the permit, then the requirement to replant something that fits would have to go away.
And I agree with both of those personally. I think they should. I don't think we should stop people from cutting down these invasive species. We should encourage them.
Or require them to replace them with something native.
I don't think you should make them require it. Then you're, you know, okay, the permit fee's not much, and then you're buying a tree, some of these people can't put it in themselves, so they got to hire a guy, and he's going to charge them to pull a permit, and next thing you know, they're like, ah, it's not worth it, just let the pepper tree go wild. That's my thoughts anyhow on it. So we can go to a motion.
So you want me to tell you the motion we'll be looking for?
Hey, anything you can help us is fine with us.
So I think we're looking for a motion to recommend approval and a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan with the amendments suggested for Section 106-64. And was there another change?
Which would be to not require a permit for the prohibited trees and not require replacement for their removal, and to insert House Bill 1159 into 106-64. I can make a B for that.
And we'll take the statutory language and adapt it to the language of the Land Development Code.
All right, I'm ready to make a run at this. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, what's our number here? I've already forgot, TCH 2019-08, based on the fact that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, subject to the amendments we have discussed specifically to 106-64, which would not require a permit or a replacement tree, further amending it to insert House Bill 1159 language into the ordinance.
Man, I'm impressed.
You're good. You are awesome.
That's my first rodeo. I don't even like rodeo.
It's like professional bull riding, right?
I'll second it.
I would probably have said all that for nothing.
Yeah. All right, good job. Can we go to the vote?
Oh, Ms. Rappa, okay, thank you. And the vote, Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 5, Planning Commission Discussion. Anybody want to discuss anything?
I do.
Robin?
Okay, Ms., I don't know if you were here, Jerry, but I had talked to Linda Pryor, and we are going to be looking at updating our marina ordinances that we presently have to see what other improvements we could make. I don't know, targeting what some of these people are, they're livings on marinas, they're not using pumpouts, things like this. So maybe if, and Linda knows about it, I brought it up at the August meeting, so if you guys could look at that and bring that to us so we can start nailing. What do you call these people that live in boats in Florida?
Yachtsmen.
Live aboard.
Depends on how nice their boat is.
Yeah, I mean, there's some questionable folks here. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Unattractive nuisance.
They're only cruisers if they actually cruise.
Right. They only transit if they actually come and go.
So if we could just look at that down the road.
Now, is that, is that something that you would like to workshop?
Do we need, I mean, I think we need to-
I think it's a very bad issue that we need to look at. I agree. I mean-
Thank you.
I know that that was a good first step we had, and what you're working with to get the state to allow us to patrol those is a big-
But, but don't you think that what they're going to put in place, a lot of these boats will go away now?
Well, I think we're talking about more what's, what's at an approved dockage already, whether it's at a commercially zoned area or, you know, especially around, I think Robin's probably most likely referring to around the Madeira Bay.
Of marinas.
Marina, the basin that's in there. And then I think a workshop is appropriate because there are probably some other areas where we might look to expand the ability to do that, to have live aboard in certain commercially zoned areas like the backside of Johns Pass Village, which quite frankly is detrimental to me because that's where I look. But that kind of area along Pelican Lane where we're going to allow parking now might be an additional draw to the village to have transient boating facilities there to allow those owners to develop those properties, to draw more people in. Because quite frankly, I've been a cruiser, right, because I cruised. We didn't just stay in one place. But around here, really, Madeira Beach itself is not that boater-friendly, and I think that's manifesting itself with what we find out here, just randomly anchored and may or may not leave ever, unless a storm comes through and blows it away. But I think part of what we should be looking at or encouraging the commissioners to look at is expanding the boating opportunities to, and it brings tourism dollars. And I know that I used to cruise, you know, you spend money where you are, you know, whether it's at a yacht club or a public facility or something like that. So it brings in all those tourism dollars, too.
University of Florida has this Anchorage Guide to Florida, too, that they worked on very hard. Go Gators. I'm University of Miami also, so I'm not just, not just a gator, but I am a gator. But they did put together a really nice Anchorage book, and all the cruisers use it now. They have it on their boats, and the trawlers that go up and down the intercoastal, they know where to stop, where the restaurants are, the gas stations. Oh, you're a good Sam guy.
Right. Well, it's a common thing to hear among boaters that, hey, we'd love to go to Madeira Beach, but there's nowhere to go. There's nowhere to stop with our boat. Like Johns Pass Village would be an ideal location, understanding that, you know, that marine or that waterfrontage and boardwalk frontage is prime real estate, and it's going to be difficult to convince anybody to give up mooring for the pirate ship to allow transient boats. But back in that basin that abuts Pelican Lane, you know, if we're going to start allowing parking and things there, that's a natural place, and it's a hurricane hole, so to speak. It's a protected waterway. You're not subject to the giant tidal movement and the, you know, and the boat traffic, and that might be something to look into as a place to expand that boating opportunity.
So, Mr. Chair, I-
Maybe that would be a CRA location.
Yeah, exactly. I was going through my head when he was talking about it earlier.
The direction I think I'm getting is that you'd like to do a comprehensive workshop on the marine ordinance, and do you want to do that as part of a regular meeting or do you want to have a special meeting?
Well, tell them what you just said.
I think we need to workshop it first.
Do you want to do that as a special meeting or as part of a regular meeting?
I would think so, kind of like we did tonight, if we gather a little early before a regular meeting, specifically target that concept.
Okay, an add-on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's easiest for everyone here.
It is to talk.
Scheduling-wise.
Okay.
To talk and-
We'll set that up, and we'll provide you with copies. Well, does everybody have copy of the Land Development Code? Do I need to provide you with copies of the regulations to focus, or?
I think we all have it.
Yeah, I think we've all got it.
Just a list of the sections that would be involved, and any reference to the comprehensive plan, and, okay.
I'll give you some of the policies from the comp plan we'll separately give to you.
And the Go Gators verbiage that's on there, too, something like that, so we know.
Well, at least you wear orange in both, both places. You got an orange hurricane shirt, and you got an orange gator shirt. You don't get too confused.
Am I the only guardian gold guy here? What's going on?
It was tough to watch the gator play the hurricanes in that game.
And to win the game and fall out of the top 25.
Yeah, whoops.
But we're back at 11 now.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, good job. All right.
That was great. Thanks, Josh.
Item Agenda Number 6, Community Development Director. Do you have anything else to add?
Gwen, did Linda have anything on a list to do?
No, she doesn't have any, anything additionally.
So I would just add, thank you for going easy on me on my first substitution in here, and I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Yeah, we just want to thank you. That was an excellent presentation earlier, and it was a good workshop, and I really think that we got to figure out the next step and move forward with that. I mean, I'm kind of a little bit embarrassed that we haven't even heard about it before, haven't been working on it, but thank God we have heard about it now.
It's the state of Florida. You have no idea what's out there, and they change it every year.
And thank you for providing a copy of this. I've been looking for that. So I remember being at the Charettes, but it was probably, you know, printed on parchment since it was so long ago. But this is great. This is a great reference point.
As we explore the CRA aspect, there's another program called Working Waterfronts, and there's another program called Main Street. All these are opportunities for incentives from the state, but also just to improve the community and bring the community together. So hopefully, we can explore those opportunities as we move forward.
Excellent, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Feeling the good, positive energy. Thanks.
Yeah, you got me fired up. Item Agenda 7, next meeting, October 14, 2019, at 6:00 PM, and the meeting is adjourned.
Are we having a workshop before?
Actually, if you could adjourn for just a minute.
On adjourn.
I got a couple more things. So the survey that I handed out while we were finishing up the presentation from Delray Beach, we'd like your input in terms of the infrastructure, particularly Part 3. The other two are there, sort of, you can see what staff's been looking at. But, you know, what are the future infrastructure needs? And think broadly. I'll be happy to constrain whatever your broad thoughts might be, but I'd like to get them because you may have some ideas of things in the future or ways to expand what's currently there that we can then use to enhance capacity, which is how impact fees are used. You take existing capacity, and you look at enhancements, and the city contributes some money, and the new development contributes their proportionate fair share. So if you could fill those out, and I'm going to have Gwen send them to you digitally in an email, so if that's easier for you to work on, it's a Word document, whatever works in that regard. And then the other thing I'd like to talk to you about is for your November meeting, we would like to take basically that worksheet and open that discussion up to the public, so have kind of like a town hall meeting. The Planning Commission would be the lead on that, but certainly the Board of Commissioners could be here as well, but to hear from the public what their ideas are in terms of infrastructure. So that, our hope is, if everything goes smoothly, by the first of the year, we'll be looking at whether or not we're going to pursue impact fees and start the study so that we can have an impact, impact fee program if that's the policy direction of the board.
That's great. I think that's great. I think involving the public in that is the way it should go, because I want, people should feel like we're doing something for them, not to them.
Yeah, and if there's objections, we want to hear about them upfront. We want to get a feeling for just what the community feels about this. I think you're a ripe candidate for impact fees. I think it's an opportunity that currently you don't have, kind of just like the CRA. But, you know, we need to be transparent. That's a key factor in the strategic plan for the city is to be transparent or more transparent, so I'm going to be transparent.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank everybody, too. You all are hardworking individuals, and it was nice to see everybody here today to hear the presentation, and I really appreciate that, all that money that you make being on this board, you know, but seriously, volunteerism is really how we can get some things done, and I just wanted to thank each of you individually.
Thank you.
And before we close out, I just want everybody to keep Linda in their prayers for tomorrow. She's having a procedure done tomorrow, so something just touched my heart just to send that out there to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen.
Gwen, Gwen, could you just, will you let, can we just, you send us an email, everything, like when the timing is right?
Yes.
In regard to Linda's-
A family member is going to contact, keep me, you know, in the loop and everything.
You're not really supposed to under HIPAA talk about too much, but you could send information like where to send a get-well card.
Okay.
Or an address, or come send here, and then you could forward them or something like that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
The HIPAA is a strange law, even though, for sure.
Absolutely, we got to-
Yeah, it's like a privacy of medical things, even though we're all very close friends that we all, you know, so, yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Now this meeting is adjourned.